Order, I would invite you all to rise and proclaim the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, can we have roll call?
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulikin.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Thurgood.
Here. You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our August 7th meeting. Would I have a motion to either approve or amend those minutes?
Motion to approve is emailed.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First order of business this evening is a public, well, we need to go into a public hearing in reference to an agreement with Biggs Inc. for the Second Street Lofts. So what I really need right now would be for someone to make a motion to suspend the city council meeting.
Sub move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then I would need a motion then to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second. Have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. This would be in reference to an agreement with Biggs Inc. on the Second Street Lofts. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're now in a public hearing, and I will now let Tim Baker go through everything he already went through once tonight, so he ought to have a really good.
I'll try to make the brief. As you recall, in the Second Street Artist Loft Building, the city will end up controlling a little over 3,000 square feet, about 3,145 square feet to be exact. Initially, we had talked about that building actually being a condominium where the Artist Lofts would be owned by Kevin's Limited Partnership, and then the city would own the space that I'm talking about. Eventually, that evolved to a long-term lease. It just complicated the Tax Credit Financing Act's aspect of this project. So what we now have is a 30-year lease with two 10-year extensions that would be at the discretion of the city to exercise, so it could be as long as 50 years. The purpose of the public hearing is to go over the terms and conditions of the lease to allow council to ask any questions, as well as the public. Kevin Biggs is here to respond with regard to any questions that may be directed to the landlord in this matter. In addition to the lease term of 50 years, there's no rent to be paid during that period. The tax clause is that if that space would be taxable, the city would pay it, but Kevin has agreed that he would reimburse the city, not through the limited partnership that's affiliated with this project, but through another entity would reimburse the city for any tax liability. We will petition the taxing authorities with the county to have this declared exempt from taxation because it will be used for municipal purposes, but we can't guarantee that at this point, so we've simply put this mechanism in place to address that if need be. With regard to the use of the property by the city, it would be suitable for use by the city for any lawful municipal purpose. We are to be mindful and respectful of the landlord's other tenants and the rest of the building, and that they have a right to the quiet use and enjoyment of their residential leasehold premises, so obviously, we are to use this space in a way that would not unreasonably interfere with the other tenants' rights to the quiet use and enjoyment of their leasehold premises. It could be sublet, but that would require the landlord to approve it. There are cross indemnifications with regard to liabilities, there are requirements of us to carry insurance, which we can, we've checked out with our insurance carrier. There's a lot of language in here that's fairly standard for a commercial lease. There are some provisions that are unique to the tax credit financing in terms of language that's included. We're not allowed to allow mechanic lanes to attach to the property if we have work done. We don't pay rent, but we are obligated to finish out the space. The landlord is responsible for the shell of the building, so what that means is that the landlord would be responsible for the maintenance and repair of the roof, the roof structure membrane, structural steel, the foundation, street facades, exterior doors, exterior windows, and any other exterior components. So over the span of 50 years, if there were a leak in the roof, that's the responsibility of the landlord. If there's problems with the facade or exterior, that's the responsibility of the landlord to take care of. Likewise, in the building, the space that we control, if we have a problem with, you know, the bathroom plumbing or the electrical work, that's our responsibility because that's under our control. With regard to the finishing out of the building, that's something that the city will do through a bid process, and we're in negotiations now with possibly hiring an architect to do the work on that, and there are some changes to that contract that will probably need to be made, but that's something that will work towards getting done fairly soon here because we want to make sure that the property is ready to be used kind of at the same time as the lofts are being rented out. We don't want to be in the process of constructing that at the same time they're trying to put people in the housing units. So this is kind of dovetailed with the parking lot lease with the redevelopment commission, so the terms are consistent in terms of 30-year lease of the parking space, as well as two-year extensions if the landlord wants to extend it for that purpose. So.
Two 10-year.
Two 10-year.
Yep.
So at this point, we're responsible for our own utilities. The rest of the building is separated from our space. There are two points of ingress egress for the Artist Loft. One is an outside stairway on the south end of the space that we control.
Off Second Street.
Coming off of Second Street. The primary entrance into the Artist Loft will be off of the parking lot itself, but in terms of common area and the lofts, those are totally separated from our space. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So try to answer any questions. Kevin, I don't know if you want to add anything to what I shared or not. Kevin's here to answer any questions that council may have. Board of Works approved this lease at its meeting after a public hearing, so at the conclusion of this public hearing, I have prepared a resolution for the council to entertain to determine whether you likewise approve it. If you do, then that authorizes the mayor to sign the lease. We won't record the lease, but a memorandum of the lease will be recorded because under Indiana law, if a lease is three years or longer in duration, it has to be recorded or you have to record a memorandum of it.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Any comments from council members? Department heads? Kevin? Okay, if none, then I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Was that a comment?
No, they're talking back there.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion to reconvene.
Thank you. A motion and a second to reconvene the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next, I would like to make matter of record the publication of the public hearing that was published.
Sub move.
Second, have a motion and a second to make a matter of record the publication of notice for the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now then, we would be down to a resolution confirming agreement for the loft housing contract. This would be resolution.
The lease.
For the lease. This would be, now is this the same resolution number?
Similar. No, it's a different resolution. It's the next number.
Okay, so this would be Resolution 2018-17. If I can get a motion to introduce that by short title only. Can you guys?
If I can make one comment before that motion is made. This resolution also waives an appraisal requirement under Indiana Code 36-110. If the city's going to enter into a lease, in order to determine what the maximum amount of rent can be paid, you have to have two written appraisals to determine the fair market rental value. In this case, we're not paying any rent. It's rent-free. So we're going to waive that requirement. Statute doesn't specifically say that we can, but it seems rather foolish for us to pay for two appraisals that aren't necessary. So we're going to take it upon ourselves to say that's not going to be done.
Then I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2018-17.
Aye.
By short title only.
Thank you. Wiley?
For the lease of property and common space parking lot, correct?
This isn't the parking lot. This is only on the building.
Oh, okay.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2018-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution number 2018-17, short title, "Resolution of the Decatur Common Council which waives appraisals otherwise required under the Indiana Code 36-110, which approves the terms and additions of Second Street Loft Building Lease, which approves its execution, and which authorizes the recording of a memorandum of said lease."
I'll make a motion now to pass Resolution 2018-17.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2018-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2018-17 has been adopted. Thank you, Kevin, for the time this evening.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, next thing on our agenda is a third reading of an ordinance in reference to no parking on Ninth Street between Monroe Street and Nutman Avenue. We did the first two readings of this ordinance at our last meeting, and this is Ordinance And before we do so, are there any comments from council or the public? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to introduce Ordinance 2018-17 on its third reading.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place Ordinance 2018-17 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Thank you. Have a motion to place Ordinance 2018-17 on its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2018-17, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur which amends Chapter 78 Schedule I of the Decatur Code of Ordinance as of 2015 as supplemented to establish a no parking zone on Ninth Street between Monroe Street and Nutman Avenue."
Make a motion now to pass Ordinance 2018-17 on its third reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of Ordinance 2018-17 on its third reading. Fellas, can we have roll call vote, please?
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulikin.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Thurgood.
Yes. Ordinance number 2018-17 has been adopted, and since Jeremy's not here, I can't really ask him how soon it'll sign up, but there'll be no parking signs posted on the west side of the street.
No parking signs on the west side.
West side, yeah. Thank you, Sarah. All right, next thing. Phyllis has a couple of transfers that we need to do, so she has resolutions to transfer funds, ones within the redevelopment commission. Do you have that, Phyllis?
Number 18.
Number 18. That will be Resolution 2018-18. What's this to do, Phyllis?
This is to transfer funds from other capital outlays, their 445 account, to professional services, 431, and the redevelopment is doing a feasibility study on 13th Street, so this is going to help pay for that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to introduce Resolution 2018-18 by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2018-18 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, all in favor? Go ahead.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Resolution number 2018-18, short title, "Resolution Authorizing and Transfer Funds Within the Department of Redevelopment Commission Budget."
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2018-18.
Second. Have a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution 2018-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2018-18 has been adopted, and Tim has a copy here for everyone to sign in the.
Aye.
Yes. The second resolution Phyllis has is to transfer funds to the rainy day fund. Phyllis, a little briefing on that one?
The city is allowed to transfer money from the general fund to the rainy day fund, and I'll kind of read the resolution. Whenever the purpose of general or special tax levy of all taxable property of the city of Decatur has been fulfilled and an unused or encumbered balance remains, common council shall order the balance of that fund to be transferred to you at the general fund or the rainy day fund of the city. So to look at our funds, and after working the budget for next year, there would be a remaining of $325,000 that I'd like to transfer into the rainy day fund.
Okay. Look for a motion. This would be Resolution 2018-19.
Make a motion to introduce Resolution 2018-19 by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2018-19 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Resolution number 2018-19, short title, "Resolution Authorizing and Transfer Funds From the City of Decatur General Fund to the Rainy Day Fund."
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2018-19.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2018-19. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Again, Tim, pass around.
Aye.
This resolution. Sign in the a column, please. The next thing we have on the agenda is an ordinance in reference to advanced structural building components being used in new construction, and how a sticker needs to be placed on the electric meter of any building being constructed with any engineered wood products in it. I believe Les would like to pass this on all three readings tonight, because what was the reason, Les? Because it's already.
Well, yeah, it's already, it's already allowed to affect July 1st, and so Kurt and I both would like to see us be able to expedite this as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I see no reason we couldn't.
State law changed July 1st?
Yeah, it's now a new requirement. What happened is they created a new chapter, Indiana Code 221121, basically requires that when certain types of what they call advanced structural components are used, those types of materials burn quicker, so it's a way to warn the fire department personnel responding to a fire that those materials are in the building, and that alerts them that there could be some structural failure because of the use of those materials if that type of structure is burning quickly. The glue that they use or the components that they use is more flammable, so.
It's like the new material, fluorine and stuff like that?
Well, it's like the I joists.
The I joists.
Any manufactured trusses.
Right.
The truss plates, if they get to a certain temperature, will fail.
Laminated beams?
They're not part of the statute.
They're not, right. At some point, that might get expanded to include additional materials, but the statute requires that the building planning department gather information, and that needs to then be reported to the fire department, as well as 911 call center. And then what Kurt and Les have come up with is, in order to allow the fire department emergency personnel to know immediately that there's this type of material in the building, there will be a sticker affixed to the electric meter that identifies what materials of this nature are there, and that way they don't have to worry about calling in and getting that information, it's readily available right there. This also contains penalties for somebody that removes that sticker once it's affixed to the meter, or in the case of an owner who refuses to allow it to be affixed. Not sure why they would do that, but if they did, there's penalties for that as well.
What's the process for enforcing that long-term? Being how?
I would think that as the house is being constructed, that's going to be part of the permitting process.
What I mean, after that.
Right, right now, there's a form that's even on our website for the application that has to be filled out. Yes, this, this, or no, not at all. Still have to fill out the form. Basically, if we run, if Les runs across the meter base and he can tell that the sticker has been peeled off, which we're looking at getting, it's a reflective sticker, once you put it on, if somebody peels it off, it's going to leave a foil back on there that won't be, that can't be removed, and then we'll say void, void, void. At that point, then we can start the process to penalize it.
Have it made similar to a watercraft sticker if you peel that off, you know, it says void behind it.
What if the meter box is replaced?
Then we would have to.
How?
It would be required.
The homeowner will be responsible, let us know, because I'll have, if they replace the meter box.
It has to go through your office.
AEP will reconnect the meter box once I inspect it.
Okay.
So at that time, when I inspect it, I will apply a new sticker.
Is this just new stuff? Just one more thing that we have to do, and nobody finds it. Right.
New construction.
New construction now? Or what about?
New construction, and right now, anything that was built before July 1st, it's voluntary.
Would you have a voluntary, so somebody wants to kind of get a sticker? Yeah, there's a provision in that, we encourage, you know, current property owners that have that material in there, that they seek that sticker to be put on there.
I guess I'm just thinking five years down the road, 10 years down the road, how do you keep track of, out in the field, that all these stickers are where they should be?
Well, we'll have.
And I know that's not, some of this is because of, through the legislation. I know, have they thought about that?
We'll have to track it in, we'll have to track it in officer.
May have, you know, Kurt's going to have documentation in his office of what homes stickers should be on the meter, and periodically, somebody's probably going to have to go out and take a look and see that it is.
There's going to always be some trial and error things. Let's say, for example, someone builds a set-alone garage that's got manufactured trusses in it, okay, but that doesn't have an electric meter on.
Right.
Electric meters on the house.
We'll still put it, we'll still put it on the meter base on the house.
On the meter base. And it's really, it's really a training, and it has been a training issue for us for a long time, because these aren't new products by any means. It's, you know, tactically, if you want to make a big, wide-open space in an old farmhouse, there probably were engineered products that were done for that purpose. So, you know, from a training side, on our side, is we've made firefighters much more aware that you do have these, and, you know, they've been around for a long time, so it's kind of a training and a tactics thing, but this is just kind of another step so that we can, we can just assist in our 360 and make us a little more conscious of that.
I would have to think, if you're fighting a fire and you get, you know, on a roof or whatever, and you put a hole in the roof, it's pretty.
Pretty easy to identify that you're here on.
You're dealing with either raptors or trusses, yes.
Yeah, it's pretty quick to tell.
Yeah.
When there's no bridge board and those types of things. We did have an incident quite a number of years ago on a large two-story brick house that, from the outside, you would have never realized that the house had even had a fire, but the whole inside, both stories collapsed into the basement inside the brick. And, you know, it was one of them issues where guys were ready to go in and, you know, just, so it's just really driven by the fire service, and, you know, there was some pushback from the builders, so this was kind of, this law kind of came about as a compromise, I guess, for what we were looking for and what the Builders Association was looking for, so it's, it is what it is.
Any other comments? If not, I would look for a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-18 by short title.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance.
Introduce.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018-18 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-18 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim?
Ordinance number 2018-18, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which requires gathering of information regarding the use of advanced structural components, which requires the local fire department, local emergency, 911 call center to be notified of such use, which requires a reflective symbol to be affixed to electric meters of certain structures constructed with advanced structural components warning of such use, and which establishes penalties for the removal of a reflective symbol or refusal to allow a reflective symbol to be affixed to an electric meters may be required."
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-18 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2018-18 on its first reading. Phyllis, without roll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulikin.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yeah.
Wiley Thurgood.
Yes. I'll make a motion now to place ordinance 2018-18 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2018-18 on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018-18, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which requires gathering of information regarding the use of advanced structural components, which requires the local fire department, local emergency, 911 call center to be notified of such use, which requires a reflective symbol to be affixed to electric meters of certain structures constructed with advanced structural components warning of such use, and which establishes penalties for the removal of a reflective symbol or refusal to allow a reflective symbol to be affixed to an electric meters may be required."
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-18 on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2018-18 on its second reading. All in favor, excuse me, have roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulikin.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Wiley Thurgood.
Yes. I will make a motion to suspend the rules to place ordinance 2018-18 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2018-18 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2018-18, short title, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which requires gathering of information regarding the use of advanced structural components, which requires the local fire department, local emergency, 911 call center to be notified of such use, which requires a reflective symbol to be affixed on electric meters of certain structures constructed with advanced structural components warning of such use, and which establishes penalties for the removal of a reflective symbol or refusal to allow a reflective symbol to be affixed to an electric meters may be required."
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2018-18 on its third reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2018-18 on its third reading. Have roll call vote.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulikin.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yeah.
Wiley Thurgood.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance 2018-18 has been adopted. With that, that's the end of the normal agenda for tonight's meeting. Tim, did you have anything else other than?
I do.
Well, no, I'm, other than that.
Okay.
You have anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. Phyllis, did you have anything?
I just want to report, we'll have the public hearing for the budget, September 4th, and adoption will be September 18th.
Oh, a public hearing for the budget, September 4th?
4th. Adoption is.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that you have? Anything else from any of the council members?
Great, I'm sorry, I didn't get an additional form, but we'd like.
Great, I'm sorry, I didn't get an additional form, but we'd like to be able to schedule another concert for next Thursday. I needed a week off, so.
We don't have any this week, though.
Nothing this week.
What do we have next Thursday? That would be the?
August 30? Yeah, for August 30th, if that'd be okay. If you need for me to just to continue with what we have on our regular event, but if you wouldn't mind, make a note, we're trying to get a band, I'll let you know as soon as I find out.
Okay, we don't have a band booked yet, but you're working on it.
I am working on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, is it okay at the council if we proceed with this as far as?
From the rolling.
I was hoping for one Thursday because I'm tired and I want to just go sit down there.
And by the way, I'd like to thank everybody on council and the police force for doing security on our German fest this week is, we, we, we think it went off as a pretty good success. I'd also like to thank all the sponsors that donated money and time to the, and the committee that put that on. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a great event. I think, yeah, if anyone was there, I think you had to have had a good time just hanging out, listening to the, the band, which played a lot of polka music, but in addition, they played a lot of variety of music, everything from Van Halen to, to Jimmy Buffett. So they were, they were pretty cool.
Van Halen. Polka style.
Polka style, that's right, yeah. That was pretty cool. Lenny, you have anything else tonight?
Uh, this, this Saturday is our physical dealing test with a new officer, so we're working on that.
For the applicants?
For the applicants, about 18 out there, 9 o'clock, I know on those.
Okay. And earlier this evening at the Board of Works meeting, two of the police officers were in modeling their new vests that they've got, that they wear on the outer side of their, they basically can wear a polo shirt underneath it with the vest over top and they are very proud of them and they really like them, so, pretty cool. Les?
Uh, our four most recent volunteers, two of them were from other departments and were ready to go, but the two that were new to the fire service have started their first module of their firefighter training, so we've got two of them Mondays and Wednesdays in that class, moved from Decatur to Monroe to Geneva, wherever. And they'll do their final, like, live burns up the Southwest Fire District here towards the end of September, but, so those two guys, when they get through the firefighter, that module, they'll be able to actually come to the scene and start to get involved and then they'll start module B, but.
Cool.
Two young guys, so we're.
Good to hear.
They're young and they're, they're, they're excited, you know, they're.
We've got a little bad news today, too, from the fire department.
Well, yeah, it, it all worked out and, and.
Deputy Chief Jim Hitchcock suffered a broken arm today, so he's going to be.
Early morning fire alarm with just some.
An accident?
An accident, yes, and so.
But he'll be on the DL for.
Probably, as of this morning, probably 46 months.
Yeah. Kurt?
Good.
Don?
We had a lot of rain.
We had a lot of rain. Yeah. I got reports from Ann today that said 3.57 inches.
It's probably over four now because we've had, you know, four, seven, eight.
Yeah. And I know Don said down.
The street garage had four and a half.
The street garage had four and a half on their gauge, so that's too much rain in 24 hours in mid-August with the ground already saturated. Bill, you have anything tonight?
Yeah, I really do. Now that we have our new street sweeper, we're encountering, and Joe, our driver's encountering a lot of vehicles sitting on the street that are not being moved. And I'm also getting calls about, they're calling these vehicles abandoned. And I've been going out and putting a 10-day sticker on these vehicles and calling them inoperable because they haven't moved. So we're, we're in the process of trying to get some of these vehicles moved so we can clean beneath them. A lot of these vehicles, I found the truck over on Ninth Street was actually parked over one of our drains and it hadn't moved for a number of months. So that's kind of our goal, as Joe gives me vehicles that need moved, I'll get with the people and see if we can get them to move. I have, I've had a few calls and people are cooperating after I tell them what our purpose is. They're getting back with me and saying, well, it's not inoperable, it's plated and it runs. And I just ask them maybe if they could move it a few feet so that we can sweep underneath it, so I think it's going to be a process where I'm not going to be, again, liked very much. But I've talked to Lenny about it and I haven't had to put a 72-hour sticker on any vehicle so far, but I guess that is an option, but I think I'll work with the police department first to see if we can contact the people and ask them if they can move the vehicles.
Yep. And, and the other thing is, and Jeremy would probably point this out if he was here this evening, and that is with this much rain, everyone's still having to mow quite regularly and with this much rain, the storm sewer grates get clogged, so we ask people not to mow your yard clippings into the street. If you do, please get your blower or your broom and clean it up.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that is a problem. We do have a, a, a ordinance in our stormwater that we can go out and contact the people, but if they keep on blowing their grass, because out in the street, and especially the ones that are actually collecting their grass and then putting their grass loose next to the curb, that is definitely a no-no, so everything runs down the drain, so.
Thank you, Bill. And did you have anything? Melissa?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the public this evening? Alan?
I got a few questions. One's on animal control, they ain't been done. The other is on railroad tracks, they ain't been done.
No, and no. I've, I've, I've done some research on the animal control. I've talked to, talked to the animal control shelter at Bluffton. Their whole process over there is a lot different than what anywhere in Adams County has. They have a, they have a true animal shelter that, I don't have the numbers in front of me and it was a couple of weeks ago that I called, but they will generally have upwards of 20 cats in inventory at all times. I think they can hold up to 30-some cats. And then they also have, I forget how many dog runs, I think they call them. And with the dog run, depending on the dog, sometimes they can put more than one per run. They do have three full-time employees. This is something that Decatur by itself couldn't take on. This is, over in Wells County, it's a joint venture between the county and the city, funded 50/50 by each. I don't, I have not talked to the county commissioners or county councils, see if they'd be interested in doing something like that. I don't want to speak on their behalf.
Who's pound is down south?
Whose pound is down south?
No, we have a.
Right now, what happens if, if a resident calls and needs an animal picked up, I believe on cats, they will only come out if they've caught the cat or caged it or whatever, and then the Hendrix come out and get that cat and take it to, help me out, Bowers, Charlie Bowers?
Is that a county or is that?
It's a county.
Yeah.
Sprung. Yeah, Chad Sprunger. Yeah. Chad Sprunger picks it up and takes it to Bowers.
He married.
Yeah. He married.
Jenny Hendricks.
Hendricks, thank you, yeah, yeah. And same with dogs. I think dogs, though, they will come out. Lenny, will they come out even if it's not contained?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, long-term, you were a long ways off from doing something that, like I said, it would be something that would have to do with the county.
Process is starting, right?
Yeah. Yeah, somewhat, yeah.
We, we're, we are still picking up dogs.
Yep.
If you look at our Facebook this morning, we picked one up this morning at Johnson Junction by the highway. We brought him up to our police department, put him in a cage. He was a little aggressive, but the officers were able to contain him and then within an hour and a half, seeing a picture on Facebook, owner come up and got him. We do a lot of that, which people don't know.
Yep.
So I, in my personal opinion, we have a very good program that we do as far as Decatur PD. We can't be based on one isolated incident. We do more good than that incident we had, so.
Yep. So, and on the railroad tracks, it's on my list of things with Jeremy that we're working on, so.
What's the process there and what do we have to do?
Well, depending on which railroad tracks it is, if it's Second Street, we try, we try to get Bungee to be a participant in it.
We got like about four of them down the street.
Yep.
That's all railroad, right? This is what you're saying, is that?
Yeah.
Is that responsibility?
We can't pay.
Do we call them, do we send them lawyers or?
I, in all honesty, since I've been mayor, we've not redone any tracks and I'm not sure if Jeremy was here could answer you, so save your question for the next meeting while I ask Jeremy. Just being honest with you.
Yep.
Anything else from the public? Bob, you got something?
If a, uh, sweeper, if you can publish some sort of sketch, my car's on the street, I'd be glad to boot it, but who the sweeper going to be?
I'm marking on that, Bob, we're trying to get a map.
Some sort, yeah, do you get some sort of a sketch?
Good idea.
Follow the garbage route or how I'm going to do it.
Yeah, that's with the fire hydrants or what it is, yeah, I'd be glad to get off the street and I get up to the driveway, yeah, but it was covered.
We didn't realize we were talking to you, Bob.
Yeah. I love that tag, yours. My daughters are supposed to each other. I'm going to be sitting there.
All right, with that, if there's no other comments, I do have one thing that I want to cover this evening, and that is a little over a year ago, Cam Collier left for deployment and he is now back and he's getting settled in with his job and his family and effective September 1st, he will reassume his position on the Decatur City Council. In the meantime, Scott Murray was named the city councilman by the Republican Party chairman and has served on the city council the last almost 14 months, I think, and I think Scott has done a very excellent job. When he speaks, we know that he has something to say, he's not just throwing something out and I really appreciate the job that you've done, Scott, and want to thank you for your service. Unfortunately, we'll miss, miss having you here, but Cam will be back on the next meeting on September 4th. With that, Mr. Baker has prepared a document that we would like to introduce at tonight's meeting on your behalf. Tim?
So this would be resolution 2018-20, so.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2018-20.
Sorry. No, yeah, I'm finished.
I'm sorry.
I will make a motion to introduce resolution 2018-19.
All right, 20. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to introduce resolution number 2018-20. Tim, if you would.
Resolution 2018-20, short title, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes Scott D. Murray for his service to our community as a member of Common Council and which expresses to him the gratitude of all he has so ably served. Whereas in the absence of Cameron D. Collier, who was called up for active military duty, Scott D. Murray was appointed to serve in his place on the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, effective July 1, 2017. And whereas Cameron D. Collier has now returned from serving his country and will reassume his duties as a member of the Common Council as of September 1, 2018. And whereas Scott D. Murray is leaving as a member of the Common Council on August 31st, 2018, after serving 14 months as a councilman from the 4th district. And whereas throughout the period Scott D. Murray served as a, a member of the Common Council, he did so in a calm, deliberative and reasoned manner while treating those he served and served with in a polite and respectful way. Whereas Scott brought a perspective to council which was grounded in family values, his media background and belief that public service was honorable and a privilege. And whereas Scott was a quick learner and earned the respect of his peers as a result of his insightfulness, good judgment and thoughtful decisions. And whereas Scott's fellow councilmen wish to recognize Scott for his service to the City of Decatur, Indiana and its citizens and wish to thank Scott for his dedication and contributions as an effective member of council over the last 14 months, now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana as follows. Resolve that Scott D. Murray has served his community as a councilman with distinction. Resolve that our community has benefited from the contributions of Scott D. Murray during his tenure as a public servant. Resolve that Scott has earned the respect of his peers and those he has served. Resolve that our community is indebted to Scott for his dedication and commitment to the citizens of Decatur and the positive impact he made. Resolve that whatever the future may hold for Scott, the members of Common Council wish him the very best and thank him for his service to our community. Resolve that this resolution be spread of record in the minutes of the Common Council meeting of this date and a copy of this resolution should be delivered to Scott D. Murray in recognition of his service to the citizens of the City of Decatur as a member of the Common Council. Daily passed, adopted and resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana on this 21st day of August, 2018. Signatures before Common Council members, W. Craig Koshaw, Tyler P. Fulenkamp, J. Wiley Sirk, Matthew J. Dyer, the mayor as presiding officer and attested by Phyllis J. Whitright, Decatur Clerk Treasurer. I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2018-20.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of resolution 2018-20. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. With that, resolution 2018-20 has been adopted and at this time I would like to present Scott with the key to the City of Decatur for your service for the last 14 months. Thank you so much, Scott. And Melissa's going to get a picture of you, sir. You want to try it again, Bob?
I'm going to try it.
To just get it from, here we go.
Two and a half.
Anything you want to say?
Well, this wasn't necessary, I was just trying to help out. Well, I've learned a lot, I've asked a lot of questions, made people mad or happy, that's all a part of it, but it was a good opportunity, I learned a lot, so. My wife says I don't really want you home on Tuesday nights, so, so I might stop by and see what's going on.
There you go.
Yeah, but glad Cam's back with his family, it's important. And I often tell people that I'm a lot like Cam. Smart and attractive, have my own business, commander in the Navy.
Okay, okay.
Flew out 16. Okay. And then I say, yeah, you're nothing like him, but he's a great guy, he's a great asset to the city and he, he needs to be here, he's really good. So, but thank you for, for putting up with me and teaching me and.
It's a pleasure having you.
Letting me stay here for a while. And thanks for letting me ask questions and I'm sure you guys get tired of, especially you two. Thank you very much.
Anything else from any of the council members on Scott's behalf?
We just want to thank you for the 14 months and, and helping and supporting and, and being an active participant, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott.
If nothing else, I would.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bill.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Have that motion. Have a motion and a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.